We're going to call the meeting to order, April 24th, 6:00 PM, Board of Selectmen's Meeting. We all rise for the pledge, please. All right, anybody else recording this meeting tonight? We have a little bit of an abbreviated meeting tonight. John's got a commitment he can't make tonight, and we're going to kind of blaze through the agenda. We're going to skip the minutes and put those on for next week, Pam. And first order of business is Reserve Police Officer appointment, Kevin Connor, Chief. Just turn on the microphone when you guys come on up.
So, second in command.
Good, welcome, welcome.
Thank you. So, before us actually is, I did send over the weekend a little information about Mr. Connor, Kevin Connor. He's looking to come onboard as a part-time reserve officer for us, which, as you know, we're diminishing our group of reserves due to the fact of the Bridge Academy and moving forward. But Kevin has actually met the qualifications. He's been around for over thirty-five years. He's a police officer, part-time. He has a bachelor's degree, as you see, in civil engineering. Started in 1988. He's a special part-time officer for AGWAM, where he still is a special. Works over in West Springfield since August of '22 as a special police officer. He attended the Bridge Academy and completed his expectations, with the exception of his hours. He needs patrol hours to be totally certified as a police officer. Kevin was given a conditional offer by myself back on April 6th. Sergeant Vaughn had did a full background check on Kevin and then presented it to me, and we interviewed Kevin, and then he got a conditional offer. And Kevin has completed a medical examination for the Bridge Academy through AGWAM. And once I do get to be able to review that, he either can take that or he can get a new examination and get him a disability training.
You said he needs patrol hours?
Yeah.
A lot more, or what are you looking at for that?
Well, we got till 2027, so.
Okay, so we got time.
We've got, we've got time, plenty of time for him to get it, yeah. But, yeah, he does need.
You just do special police officer work?
No, I worked for a construction company during the day. Just do the specials. I work quite a bit.
Ask why?
I still like what I do. I still enjoy it. It's dope. Thank you. It's good to hear that. Yeah. Need more.
And how's your, how's his disciplinary record?
As you can see, there's no disciplinary issues whatsoever in the paperwork I gave that came over from a lieutenant, I think it was, Cross-Hope. I think he's, he's never had any disciplinary issues.
Like even in, like, junior high school or anything?
He's had an outstanding record.
Well, there was that one time. I can't think of anything.
That you would want to admit to.
See, you got some good handwriting. You submitted a.
Ooh, sample, yes.
Sample here. It'll be, it'll be good. I don't know if you guys do handwritten reports anymore.
We do the citations still. Still. That's not all computerized. There are some still citations, but most of it's going computerized.
And you're coming over from AGWAM. How come you're looking to get out of AGWAM?
Excuse me a minute, please. Been around for eighty hours, two hours.
So, you're looking for more patrol hours? Come over here, help us out. We, obviously, like Chief said, we're, we're low on reserves, so we could always use a few more in the bucket, so.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, obviously, we're going to be losing another three of them, three reserves, come June 30th. And we lost three last year. We'll probably be ending up after June 6th, working part-time officers, reserve officers, to help us fill the shifts that become available when the full-timers needing time off or vacation or something.
The nicer weather's coming, so there'll probably be a little bit more vacation time coming out, right?
Yeah, that July month is a tough one for us.
Don, you got anything else?
No, I will appoint Kevin Connor as a part-time, what are we doing?
Reserve officer. We still call him a reserve officer, yeah.
Second, I guess? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Welcome aboard, Kevin.
Thank you very much. Can we get a quick, quick picture of you three? Four? Go ahead. I'm going to take the picture of you guys. Right up there.
Come on either side of you.
Smile, one, two, and three. I've been in the last several, so we can skip out of there. That's okay. Thank you very much.
All right, next topic, outdoor dining legislation extension. So, looks like we got, what, the one-year extension here, Don?
Yeah.
From Governor Healey on March 29th. Then ACT making appropriations for fiscal year '23, and then there was the extension again until April 1st, 2024.
Now, we've gotten a application from Mountain View.
We have not gotten an application because they went to the planning board. And their permit has been extended to include seating at the rear of the property under the tent, which has been permitted through the building department. So, planning approved. They are not serving alcohol outside at all, so they don't have to change their liquor license. So, they're good to go. They don't need further permission.
You don't need a Board of Health thing or anything? I suppose there are licenses for the.
They already are outdoor for the front half or front portion.
Yeah, just look at the additional seating out back.
Yeah. And Cassabella, they are permitted to use their patio. It's when they were extending their seating on the sidewalks a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, I mean, they haven't requested anything because the restrictions have lifted with COVID. And we do have an application from La Cucina, who would like to expand their seating to where they've, they did it for COVID, where it's all lit. And, but that will require not only your approval, but ABCC's approval.
Okay, so they're, so I guess, so they're going for the permanent.
Yes.
Thing, right? So, they got to go through, they got to get our approval than ABCC.
Correct.
Okay. If we give our approval for the permanent, what happens to the temporary extension?
I, I think it's a moot point.
Well, no, but, yeah, what I'm saying is, if they don't, if they don't have a permit for a temp, temporary, they go, go for the, I think, with the ABCCs, if you go for the, you go for the permanent, then you go for the permanent. That's, that's it.
Right, but in the meantime, I would think that, given the information you have in front of you, you could.
But they haven't, they haven't requested that.
Well, no, probably, again, because so much has changed since COVID. I don't, I don't know what the application looked like from the Board of Health or Fire.
Well, we had, we had them from before, that they had, they had to put down, you know, where there's the name and address and that type of thing, what their seating was, a map of what their seating was going to be.
Yeah.
They, and then the fire department had to go over and check it, and then they had to have it be handicap accessible and all that kind of stuff. It had to be fenced in, you know.
Well, then I will, I'll contact them and ask that they forward that information to us, and you could have it for your next meeting.
Yeah, then we have to find out that they want to do that, and then go for the.
I think they want the permanent. I mean, that's pretty clear to me.
And then if we have the permanent, do we need to have some kind of regulations so that everyone follows the same thing if later on, Cassabella or someone else moves into town, or, I don't know, Mountain View wants to serve outside?
Well, that would be regulated by ABCC and the town.
Yeah, the town has to have regulations too, I think.
Right, right.
Well, find out what they want to do.
The dimensions of the outside dining would be a concern. Maybe if we kind of come up with some regulation, that the police department ought to be brought in, see if outside dining, particularly in, you know, like a mini mall-type setting poses any safety issues.
I don't think they've had any really safety concerns the last two years or so.
They haven't, no.
You know, any of the establishments in town.
I'm just thinking of, you know, anything in the future.
So, looking at what other towns were doing with this, I saw a lot of them just, you know, motioning to extend the regulations per, based on, you know, the recommendations on March 29th by the governor. And I don't think a lot of other towns were basing it off of applications or not. They're, you know, blanket statements saying, hey, you know, we're going to extend these, now people can, you know, ask for it.
And these advisories are, you know, come out from ABCC.
Yeah.
All the time, and they are sent to all the licensees. So, they, they have that permission from the state, but whether or not you guys want to regulate it yourselves or not.
I think that's a deeper question as far as, you know.
Yeah, it's later on.
Those are later, but as far as extending this, what are, what are your thoughts on that, Don?
Well, I, I think I want to show La Cucina wants to do it, if it has an effect, if we, you know.
So, you don't want to extend this at the moment?
That's, well, we, we'll hold off for a week. Let's see what they want to do, you know?
Put it on the agenda for next week?
Because Mountain View's all set. They're serving now and everything, they're doing their thing.
Right.
All right, we'll move right down to Tecton Fire Station Expansion.
That was here.
Right on time.
Well, we have a couple of issues tonight that we have to move along here, so.
We need to make, we need to make you co-host.
Do you have the link to the Zoom? You can go right to our website, too, it's right at the top of the website. Just for the record, Dalton did say he was recording. Oh, if you go to mdma.gov, you can get the Zoom link right there on the page.
Okay. Sorry for that. Thought I had a few minutes to get it turned on before I had to come up. Just really quickly, this is a little bit of rehash, but I'll go through this part fairly quickly. You know, we had our series of meetings with the community, and, you know, again, based on the, the people that were present, a hundred percent of them indicated they saw a need to do some improvements. Common goals that were identified between both the firefighters and the, the community were firefighter health, operational safety, and bay capacity. There was a, a greater interest in investing in sort of the mission-critical spaces, in other words, the apparatus space. And then some of the other functions were more modest, sort of enthusiasm for improvement. And then, of course, we did go through three program options. Option two was the preferred direction. And then there were some adjustments made by that through voting, that the public training space could increase from what was in that option two. The sleeping and fitness could reduce, apparatus space could increase, firematic support. And then there was a change on the net-to-gross thing. So, that was a 14,662-square-foot program. In our last meeting, we talked about, you know, what can we do? It's simple, and it started off with the discussion of what happens if we just add two bays? Tear down the one bay to the side and add two new bays in its place. And so, this is basically that simplest of solutions. I did depict a few other things here, which you can see on the right-hand side. The new addition is just wide enough for, for two bays. It's sixty-four feet in depth of clear bay, and then there's a little bit of support space that I did put in the back. And if I have an arrow here, there it is. I did provide, back over here, the space, I'm not including it, but if you wanted to do like a metal building or a simple building for some of the trailers or some future gear, that's still an option here. I did get enough parking spaces for the call staff alongside the building. There's, one of those wells is right here. The other one is right. My mouse is moving slow, right there. Did widen up the apparatus apron. Of course, because of the greater width, you could actually see in the shadow behind, there's the edge of the, the former bay. Now, I will say, architecturally, this one's a little bit weird. I haven't drawn you elevations yet because we're looking at a couple of options, but we're going to have a taller bay, and we've got a roof that's going to come into it. I'm going to have to do some little bit of fussiness with, with the roofing. Having said that, this was, this was the basic ask. I do have, I did run some numbers on it. This is 6,945 gross square feet, including new and existing. And right now, I'm looking at a total project cost, all soft costs and everything, of about 5.8 million for that.
Okay, good.
So, here's the floor plan. The stuff with the black walls is existing. The stuff with the gray walls is addition or renovations. Right now, the portion of the existing building that I'm retaining is about 3,763 square feet. The new construction is about 3,182 square feet. You can see there's a sixty-four foot, come on, mouse, sixty-four foot from this back wall right there, all the way to the front wall. I did use the information from the Mitchell study on your truck lengths. So, those are actually the lengths of trucks that you actually have. I used the two bigger trucks, E1 and T1, the tanker and the first engine, in the new bays. I left E2 in the bay just adjacent. You can see I get Car 1 and S1 behind the two bigger vehicles. I'm sorry, the brush one is behind the E1. And then the M1, the medic car, and the S1 are in the far-left bay, and I do indicate the ICE rescue. So, that means the only current equipment that is not in this bay, and, you know, the Chief can shuffle this as he will, is there's a second, I believe it's a Board of Health trailer and the antique. So, you know, if you wanted the Board of Health trailer in there, then one of these others could move out to that future storage building. I did, you know, in order to open up bay space, these bays, the new bays are wider than your existing bays. So, these are, these are basically, you know, the standard that we do for new construction. And then, of course, I did leave appropriate aisle space between the vehicles so they don't have the squeezing. What I did do is extended this just a little bit past the existing end wall, right here, just because architecturally, that makes it a little bit easier detail. I did add a mechanical electrical room. I, I did this because every single time I renovate a new building, there's always some energy code or some new mechanical code requirement that tells me I need some more mechanical electrical space. If, in fact, we don't find that to be the case, it can be apparatus support space. I did get a workroom in here, smaller than the original, you know, the program, even the 14,000-square-foot program, but you've got one. I did get the SCBA room, and that's actually on program. I got your decon laundry, which is under current program or the original program from Mitchell, but it's still, it's got, you know, the washer, the extractor, the cleaning sink, as well as the walk-in shower where you can clean boards and decon individuals. I've also got a turnout gear room, using part of that old apparatus bay that gets the locker count that we talked about with the fire department, and it's 26. And I got the EMS storage room from the program, just a little bit under that original program. And then I reused a couple of things along the way, the bathroom that's already off the bay, I maintained. Most of this area, I'm on my mouse, most of this area of the building is untouched, with one exception. I do believe that when I spend money on this building, the building code and the building department's going to tell me, you have to do something towards handicap upgrades. So, I did take that one toilet that currently faces the bay and turn it into a single-stall handicap toilet. You know, they're going to require that I spend some money towards handicap improvements. So, basically, that's down and dirty, the simple solution that I was asked to produce.
I do have a question.
Sure.
Before we move, I don't know if you have another slide after this one?
I do.
Looking at this layout here, just out of curiosity, would it, is it feasible to the decon and the mech room and, you know, the back wall, move those back and put a hallway between them so you can get from the turnout gear room to the new side easier, rather than having to go through the bays, just get over there to the new.
Ah, you could, you could.
Would, would that add a lot to the project?
Well, it's going to add square footage, which always adds money.
Right.
But I did draw you a couple of other options.
Okay, okay.
Because I wanted you, I wanted you to be able to make informed decisions. So, this is, this is what I was asked for. The next one that I did, I took a slightly different approach, and if I'm telling the truth, I actually drew this one first and then realized I'd overdone what you asked me to do, so I went back and drew the other one to make sure that I had responded exactly to the need. But this one, I did once again add a bay over on the right-hand side. You'll notice, if I look real close in there, there's a little niche in there.
Yes.
But that helps me to do is separate the new big roof and give me a little space to tie the roofs together. So, architecturally, it helps me. It does add a little square footage, so I'll show you what I did with it. And then I also put a little shed roof thing on the back and moved my mechanical electrical space back there. Aside from that, the future, you know, storage building is still an option. I did rework the, the parking layout a little bit, but I still got you the 26 spaces for your call firefighters. I did widen the apron. Oh, by the way, we'll have to move that, that tank for picking up the bay ways, but I just put it outside in the apron. I was interested, the, the property line does seem to go further back, but there's a driveway, is that a right-of-way that somebody has? Or, there it is, right, right there.
I seem to remember it being a right-of-way.
Yeah.
We'd have to pull the deed.
Yeah, I mean, I stayed away from it. By the way, in all these solutions, that back corner is digging into the hill, so we're running foundation wall and waterproof that.
Yeah.
You can actually, in this scheme, which actually has a little mezzanine, you could get out onto the grade from there.
Okay.
So, it's a little bit bigger. It gives you a little more functionality, so it, this, this total scheme is seven, I'm sorry, 8,340 gross square feet, and it came in at about 7.3, 7.4 million. And so, what that does for you, because I get this little sliver of space that helps me deal with the roof lines a little bit better, I think we'll make a more aesthetically pleasing building. It also gives me a little bit of space to get to hydration closet, the hose, hose storage, the utility area for, for the apparatus space. I get my decon laundry a little bit bigger, so it's actually pretty close to the original program. My turnout gear, my EMS storage is the same. I moved the mechanical electrical out, and that allowed me to get, my glasses on, because my mezzanine hides it. I get a, a full-program workroom. I got the cold water rescue storage room, which wasn't in the previous plan. I got a room for my compressors, both for the SCBA and regular shop air. And then I've got the SCBA room and a small little hazmat closet. And then that black line with the, the half shit tone there indicates I can get about a 500, whoops, 525-square-foot mezzanine on top of that. So, that could be either used for additional storage or for training. You can do a lot of training indoors when you've got a high bay. So, that's for pretty low class because the bays are already high volume. If I put that roof, that floor at about 10, 10-foot-8, I get one single-run stair, and you get a lot of utility out of it. Again, the only other change I made over here was that handicap restroom, right there. So, moved the door, got rid of the shower, made it large enough to be handicap accessible. Same trucks are inside, everything to the, to the left of that existing apparatus wall is the same as it was. So, that was option two.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Is there something new in decon technology? The Springfield paper had an article, front-page article over the weekend about firefighters and cancer, and they showed a picture of a decon room in one of the suburban towns. And the article projected that somehow this was really new and exciting, and I'm wondering, is it the same as we have or will have?
So, here's the story. The, the way that Mr. Mitchell put it in your original program, he did a fully-isolated hot zone, cold zone decontamination area. So, basically, you come in from the outside, you have the opportunity for some personal decon. So, there's the backboard wash, there's the shower, is that. Then you come in where you, you can pull off your gear, you can throw your gear in the gear laundry. Then you had a personal shower, so you, you know, you've got the, the backboard shower out in front. You can shower, and then you have a series of small lockers where you can have a change of clothes and get out of the, the gear you wore on the site, the clothes you wore on the site, and put clean clothes on. That is pretty much the state of the art where we're going with decon and carcinogens. A lot of departments don't do that. That's not what I've given you here. I've given you more like sort of the middle-of-the-road solution, where you do have a little bit of basic decon, you have the backboard shower, you have the sink area where you can do some gross decon on some of your equipment. And then I've given you the, the turnout gear laundry space, and that's all in one room, as opposed to a series of rooms like in the Mitchell report. We do that for a lot of stations. We do the, the full build-out for some stations. It is, it is a growing trend, but it is not, it's not necessarily an absolute at this point. There's no code that requires me to go down that. NFPA, the guidelines for decontamination are. NFPA, the guidelines for decontamination are, are moving closer to that, but even then, they're still guidelines. And of course, most firefighters do gross decon on the site anyway. They hose off and get the worst of it off of them while they're out at the fireside.
Okay.
So I didn't look, I look at, I did look at photo plan.
You have two options?
One more.
One more?
Oh, did I do this? Oh, I went backwards. Okay. So the last one, option three, and I get, I did, I asked the question the last time I was here, you know, what's the max number? And I heard like ten million was the max, hoping for more like three or four. So I didn't go over the ten million. Actually, while I was on vacation, I had Matt in my office draw up a scheme. And then I came back and looked at it and said, Matt, it's over ten million. I'm not showing this. So in this one, I did a little bit more. Everything from the existing fire station to the right is exactly the same as the previous scheme. The only thing new is I did add a little bit of space on the people's side of the building. And that mouse is slow. So again, everything over here, exactly the same. What I did is added fifteen feet, four inches by forty feet. And I expanded the day room kitchen dining. Got you a sixteen-seat training room that can be reconfigured to be a day room or, or a dining room. I got you a bigger kitchenette, still not a massive kitchen, but it's much, much bigger than that little niche that's in there now. I got you two male, female accessible restrooms, turned over that other space to storage and to an AV closet for the training room. And I gave you one shared office that's big enough to have three separate workstations in it. So that's eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-three square feet, nine point eight million. So.
We've got three options.
Really quickly, there's, there they are. Option one, it gives you those, those bathing that you see in the dark orange. Option two adds you more of those support spaces that you see in the light orange. And then option three gives you that little bit of extra day room kitchen dining workspace and accessible restrooms. And, you know, we looked at this chart last time. It's essentially the same thing. It tells you what you get out of that.
Has the, the fire department seen this at all or?
They have not.
This is the first presentation of this tonight?
Yep, yep. So, yeah, I, I pulled this together after returning, so I was happy with it and ready for tonight. So I haven't had the chance to share it with them yet. But those are the three options that we came up with.
These are current pricing?
Yeah, and I actually brought you, this is more detailed. I don't like to put this on slides. Enter. This is actually my breakdowns for those. So basically, the top couple of lines there are, is a, is our calculator for duration of the project so that we escalate to the proper point in the project, which is usually the midpoint of construction. The next section down is your hard costs. You can see that there's new construction, there's renovation. I've also included, you know, the markups on there. Because it is a smaller project, I went a little bit heavy on the general contractor markups. Overhead tends to be a little more expensive for smaller projects on a percentage basis. I did through, throw in a number for the demolition. It's a wag number for the demolition and a wag number for the hazmat because I don't know what actually is in there, if anything. There's always something these days, it seems like. So it's not, it's not a massive number in terms of the removal and monitoring, but I am expecting something. I did include a design contingency because, you know, these are very, very early designs. So it's really hard for an estimator to do any detailed estimate on it. And then I have a escalation number. And then the lower section is your soft costs. So everything from A and E fees, there's a furniture allowance that's based on square footage. I will say it's based on square footed, square footage of new and renovated space. It's just a, it's a tool that gives us a number right now. A lot of the different soft cost material testing and then bidding costs and utility back charges and bonding costs, all of that. Try to capture in there with some number. So those are your soft costs. And then the final numbers on the back are your contingencies. There's a five percent contingency on the, on the hard cost numbers, which, you know, those are some, those are modest numbers. I'm comfortable with them. I don't usually have problems with five percent. I usually don't have problems with two percent for new construction. And then there is a five percent contingency on the soft costs as well because some of those are just, you know, formula driven as opposed to actual numbers that somebody provided, so.
Jeff, the reporter from the Times is asking for your name. Do you just mind stating your name for me?
Yeah, my name is Jeff McElravy. Ms., there we go. Thank you. And so those are the three options. I will share these with the fire department and have a conversation with them about them. And of course, I can get you actual hard copies of these for you to peruse as well as a copy of this presentation.
Yeah, if you could email us all this presentation if possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
Send a digital copy. Definitely a lot there to look at. I think we need to digest it a little bit and we're obviously missing a member. So a full discussion is not really going to happen tonight.
Yeah, of course not. And, you know, to me, the important thing is get something back to you so you can start thinking about it. And then to show you, you know, what the incremental differences are. Because, you know, if, if the bare basics is it and that's, that's what makes sense for the town, it's fine. If, you know, that little bit more, what is it, one million dollars more gets you, you know, much more program and much more future life? That's a choice.
Yeah, there's definitely some options there and, you know, definitely helps to see a, you know, revision there, you know, from the old report that was, you know, years old and whatnot.
Yeah, I think this was the step that the, in the community discussions we had, they were anxiously, anxious to get to this step.
Yeah, I think they were trying to jump ahead to get to this step without going through those other things, but yeah.
Yeah.
You'll send copies of the presentation and we'll post it.
Thanks, Jeff. I appreciate your time.
I understand, happens all the time. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Are you going to give us hard copies?
Uh, yeah, I'll get you, I'll get you.
Digital.
Digital copies of everything, but I'll get you hard copies of the drawings so you can actually drop a scale on them if you want to.
All right, so I think from there, we're just going to kind of start wrapping things up.
You want to sign next week?
We'll sign next week. Review the motions next week.
Well, that gives, will that give us the seven days?
Well, that'll be the first. And the meeting is on the eighth.
The eighth, so it gives us one full week.
Where we're cutting it close.
Yeah.
Particularly since it has to get posted, not just when you sign, it's when it's posted.
So maybe you can have it ready, we can come in and sign it.
We, well, what are your plans on this joint meeting on Wednesday? Are you going to be attending that? Because we could always post it, we could always, that's not on the agenda, so we can't sign it.
We can sign it. We don't have to, it doesn't have to be.
If you vote to sign it tonight, then you can sign it when you have a chance. So you vote to approve the warrant and approve signatures. You approve the execution of the warrant, then you can sign it when we.
Well, let's, let's do it, say, I make a motion, we approve the warrant with any amendments by town council. And we'll sign it this week.
What you have before you tonight is, has been reviewed by council.
You know, well, I got it, you know, I, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if I sent it to you.
I, I haven't seen your question.
The, the.
Do we have a copy in here? No.
On the, on the fire department, is the chief still here? On the fire department for fixing the, the renovation of the truck. It's not going to be as much as ten thousand dollars, right? As of the end of March, we had fifteen thousand or so in the, some account. We can't use that for this?
I believe we can transfer the money.
You know, rather than, rather than re, rather than re-appropriating it.
And, and so all that we would have to do would be to adjust the motion. Now, I'll go over this with the treasurer, but we can adjust the motion to take it out of that.
To transfer.
Special purpose revenue and transfer it into the fire department.
I don't understand. No, no, I don't understand what you mean.
Well, you have money left over.
Well, yeah, it looks like, it looks like we're going to have money left over. I'm talking about every year we put aside X number of dollars for equipment.
Yeah.
Or, or operations. So it looks like we have right now fifteen thousand dollars left in there. We have a current line item, this is.
I read your, your email and we also have some money left over in other places. So I, so you're talking now about transferring money out of the operating budget for fiscal twenty-three.
Well, well, even, even on, even on the, even on the the equipment, like with the, the money that we need to, to get the brush truck. Okay, that's a purchase of equipment. Well, we have fifteen thousand dollars left over in the equipment account. So why couldn't we take the ten thousand nine hundred out of that tomorrow, for example? And then we wouldn't have to raise and appropriate that at the town meeting. We wouldn't, you know, we, you know what I mean? We could just say, take no action because we've done it. And plus, it would speed up the process of getting the brush truck because we wouldn't have to wait till July first.
Can we get a hard number on what we have available? Did you have that?
I have that someplace.
Yeah, it was in your email. I didn't see that.
I, I, I like, I'm so cautious about the open meeting. I just sent it to him. I have it here someplace. Let me see. I thought I took it with me. Open up my email. Got my email there? Sent a couple of them this weekend.
Well, anyway, there's a couple of them now, not at four thirty.
This is, was sent to the chief and to me and the other selectmen. Didn't receive it. If Article eleven is not going to exceed ten thousand, why can't it be done now under account? And you gave the account number, fire department equipment.
Right, which is how much in there?
Fifteen eight. No reason we can't do that.
It's a verified number?
Well, that's from the, that's from the account. At the end of March, now I don't know if they have plans to buy stuff in the meantime.
So we need a little bit of clarification.
So I need a little clarification on that.
I mean, it'd probably help clarify that if he's got a second. I know he's talking to Jeff.
And then you said there'll be fifty-nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars remaining.
Remaining, yeah.
From this account.
I mean, I'm just thinking.
And you pointed out that the fire department ended fiscal twenty-two with nine thousand in that account unspent.
Right. You know, like twenty-two.
Hey, you got a second? Thank you.
So the question I have is, in your equipment account, at the end of March, you have like fifteen thousand eight hundred bucks left.
Yes.
Couldn't we use that ten thousand dollars of that for the new brush truck, that's equipment? But I didn't know if you had, you had plans to buy something and order something or just waiting for something to come in.
So the answer is no, because firefighting equipment is for turnout gear only. It was labeled by the accountant as, you know, firefighter equipment. We never really changed it to be, that's what it's for, is turnout gear.
Oh, okay, just.
So it can't be used right then else?
Yeah, only, it is labeled, you're right, firefighter equipment's a little bit misleading. But it is for turnout gear only.
Okay, okay. And what about the operations account?
Um, that is going to be spent down. We have some tires to replace on trucks. And it's only, I think, believe it's seven right now.
You've got eleven four nine nine in that account.
You might have spent some since then, though.
Yeah.
All right, oh, well.
We have quite, we're going to change the tires on the tanker and the squad's going to get all set of, all new tires as well. Now it's going to be a big portion of that.
All right.
Big tires.
Like talking to my wife, can't we do this?
Thanks for the clarification.
No. Sorry.
Thanks. No, thanks. I'm glad. Thank you. I tried.
The only other question.
So I second your motion.
You second my motion?
I second your motion way before that.
All right.
On favor?
All right, so we've.
You've just voted on the motion to.
Sign the warrant.
Sign, execute the warrant, yep.
Right.
Ending any, any changes from council.
Town council. And we're going, so you'll have it here Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, we can sign it?
I mean, I'll have it tomorrow.
Okay.
The other, the only other issue would be that, that grant money and whether or not you want to wait till the fall to, for the other appropriation. I mean, that's a sizable amount. Fifty, was it fifty, they wanted a hundred and thirty-some.
Are you talking for the master plan?
Yeah.
I think what was the talk was to take no action on it this.
That's, that's what the motion now says. When I verify tomorrow that we have until June of twenty-four, then that seventy-five is not going to go away.
You'll have more clarification on that tomorrow too, right?
I will. So. We did, we did take, you know, it's still there. So we would have to revise the motion if you decide to go for, if the advisory committee decides to recommend an additional sum.
Okay. All right, so moving along, just a couple of quick notes. There's a school committee meeting on Wednesday at six, followed by a six-thirty meeting with Hampden Advisory, Wolverham Finance, and both Hampden and Wolverham selectors are invited to discuss the budget for fiscal year twenty-four. And that's going to take place at the police station at six and six-thirty on Wednesday.
And on that last item, I did look at the assistant town administrator positions in several towns. Actually, I looked at all the towns in Massachusetts. And I tried to find a town where it was comparable in size in the same region. I mean, there, if you go east, most of the towns seem to have an assistant. Out in central and western, it's less common. But I think the one that I gave you there from Granby
Yeah.
is a good basis. Obviously, there are a couple of things that they assign them to do that don't apply here. But where I've highlighted in yellow are the responsibilities.
So let's, let's move that whole agenda item to next week, just so we have a further discussion on it. We can get into detail on it if we need to. Did you want to run through your administrative report?
Okay. Well, the meeting tomorrow night here at six o'clock would be, would involve a presentation from the consultant and an update on the town's municipal vulnerability program. We've been involved now for two years and have received grants that now total five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars for various projects, including the hundred thousand dollar small bridge program to rebuild the bridge over South Road. And they're also going to talk about the application that will go in in early May to get design, design funding for the reconstruction of the East Main Street Bridge. And they also have some pictures that will startle some people from under the bridge where there's been considerable rust and spalling. But, which is why the highway superintendent placed those barriers on that side of the bridge. It is not in danger, but clearly the town needs to plan to rebuild it.
I think there were some questions about the barrels if, you know, if the bridge was unsafe, but.
Right. We need to replace it and we can do that in a timely way by getting a grant for the design, which will cost more than two hundred thousand dollars. The bridge itself will be three to four million. And that, once we get the design done, we can go to the transportation improvement program for the region and get it on the, on the tip. And so there's a good possibility that the bridge can be replaced without cost to the local taxpayer. So that's what's going to be discussed tomorrow night. And they're also going to just talk about some other updates. There's also a meeting at five-thirty to have to do with residents who may want to install so-called pollinator gardens in order for your garden, certain gardens of native plants and. in order for your garden, certain gardens of native plants and flowers to flourish. You got to have pollinators, so that's why they call it that. And these are important because they absorb, among other things, stormwater, which would ordinarily go into the brook and come downstream and cause flooding. So the more upstream work we can do with natural changes that will prevent, absorb and prevent stormwater from, from getting into the, both Big Brook and East Brook and flowing downstream, the lesser the chances are of serious flooding that the town has experienced in the past in that part of East Main Street. Also, in conjunction with that, I had a conversation today with the manager at, at Laughing Brook Audubon. And they're going to be very much involved in the same effort on their property to get, to have rain gardens and other plants and flower gardens, which will do what we've just described. So that's going to be discussed at 5:30 here tomorrow night and then followed by the municipal vulnerability project. It's clear that the climate is changing. It's clear that our storms will likely be heavier and perhaps more flooding. So the purpose here is to anticipate that, to take measures now that would minimize the damage in the future.
And that's not required?
Well, I had a meeting with Whip City Fiber on April the 20th. And we've scheduled an in-person meeting with representatives of Whip City Fiber and our Fiber Optic Committee for March 3rd at 3:30.
May 3rd. May 3rd.
You keep saying March.
Do that time machine.
May 3rd, I know I did that. It's May 3rd.
May 3rd.
Coming soon, 3:30 in the afternoon here. And it'll be an in-person meeting. I've already informed the Fiber Optic Committee and the, the, the top representatives from Whip City are going to be here as well.
I noticed on that email you sent, did, have you updated that with the new email addresses? Because I don't think Dave was on there. Dave Hayward? You might want to double check with him.
I'll double check.
And I don't know if Eric was using his work email anymore, so I think he has another one there, just to follow up on.
Yep. One of the proposed responsibilities for an assistant town administrator is to administer the website and, and technology. And it seems to get more involved every week. I'm also working on a job description for a combined conservation agent, stormwater manager. I don't know if this can succeed, but it's all about water. And people who have the training and skills ought to be able to handle both responsibilities. I know that there's another community in the region that had an advert, had an advertisement a while back, maybe six months ago, for the same kind of position. Obviously, we have a problem with managing stormwater. And you don't have to talk to conservation commission members very long before they point out that they have a very significant problem and need that kind of assistance. So I will prepare for next week. You'll have the job description, recommended grade and salary. And we'll decide what to do, whether to.
Where are we going to fund that from? Is that going to come from grants?
That's it, right now, I think we're talking about something that we would have to fund at the special. We could get busy and certainly be ready to go at the special if, you know, funding is approved. So that's also, still don't have an answer yet for the Minnetoga Land Trust and the trash issue.
I don't see why we can't just throw it away at the, at the town dump. You know, it's town trash. You know, as long as we're, we're monitoring it and making sure that nobody's throwing away, you know, sofas and, you know, household goods and.
Mattresses.
Mattresses, you know? You know, if it's just a bucket of trash that they're taking up once a week, I don't see a problem with that.
It's just ordinary trash. But I'm going to wait and see what the park department, how they respond. I think they have, but I don't have the information at this point.
Tom, I think I skipped over selectmen's reports. Did you have anything?
No.
Anything else to come forward?
Most to adjourn.
Second. On favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everybody.